We'll open up our meeting and to start off with, we will have the flag salute. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Goldwell.
Here.
Counselor Goodwin. Mayor Borley.
Here.
Counselor Moller.
Here.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Underwood.
Here.
Okay. We have five present, one excused, and one not appointed yet. At this point, we would go ahead and, Robert, do we do that now? What, at the beginning, appoint or?
Well, you had it here as, if it's what you want to do, you had it here in your, as number eight, so I'm assuming that that's when you were gonna do it because...
Okay. So, we would go ahead and have approval of minutes.
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes with five ayes, one excused and one not appointed yet. We'll bypass the public hearing for a couple of minutes. We'll go on to recognition of visitors and hearing of petitions. Is there anybody here that wants to bring anything before counsel at this time? We'll skip over the request for counsel action on the strategy for a city manager. That'll take a little bit of time. And the hiring of the city manager. Let's see what else we can get in. D, request for counsel action, part-time library position. Is that gonna take a minute or?
We'll go to H. I just go to H. We're all waiting.
Okay.
Well, it's gonna take longer.
It's gonna take longer to do that.
Because you've got to put stuff into public record and stuff like that.
Okay.
It's now time almost for the public hearing.
All right. We'll go ahead and start our public hearing then at 7:35. This is a land use hearing. We've got the land use hearing procedures behind me on the wall. I'll read this. I will open the meeting. I'll state the time, which is 7:35. I'll ask staff for a report. Then we will go through the, whether there's any presentation by counsel or for counsel. We will ask for any conflict of interest from the counsel or ex parte information. And then we will have testimony from those in favor, and those in support, and then those in, not in favor nor in support. And then come back with the same testimony in opposition to them. At this time then, we would ask staff to give us a report.
So, there's a lot of information you've been given. I am going to go through it fairly quickly, hopefully. I will be noting areas that I think are not a real concern for us tonight, but want to make sure that you understand what you're really working on. Your appeal tonight is the denial of a variance that was set forth for a partition.
I don't mean to interrupt, but can you let everybody know who you are? Did everybody know and what kind of your position is? I know who you are.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Carol Lewis. She's serving as our interim contract city planner. She used to actually be employed directly by the city, retired. And with the departure of our current planner, Carol is working on contract with us as our interim planner until we do a permanent appointment and open a position for applications. Thank you, David.
Okay.
Okay. So, again, your appeal is on a denial of a variance. It's, there were two parts of that variance. It was the lot width and the lot size that would have allowed the partition of the subject property. So, that's the simple part of it. That is the decision that needs to be considered by you is the variance to that lot size and lot width. And then if you choose to approve those two things, then a consideration of the partition itself. So, it sounds really easy for all this paperwork. Sorry about that. Your criteria on your, is on page 22 of your packet, second page of this staff report. I'll go through that briefly for you. Your variance criteria, these are what, the things you have to be considering as you go through your decision making, is that the development that results from the approved variance will not be detrimental to public health or safety, that the request is not in conflict with the comprehensive plan, that the request is the minimum variance necessary to make reasonable use of the property, that the requested variance is consistent with the purpose of the zone, if there's more than one variance, the cumulative effect of the variances will result in a project that remains consistent with the purpose of the zone, that the, any identified negative impacts resulting from the variance can be mitigated to the extent practical, that the location size, design characteristics, and other features of the proposal shall have minimal adverse impacts on property values, livability, or permitted development in the surrounding area and the natural environment, and that the property has a physical circumstance or condition that makes it difficult to develop. That's for the variance. The partition has a different set of criteria. I think we'll stick with the variance right now. Once we're through that, then we can go through the partition, should you do that, because I think it starts getting a little mumble jumble in there if we don't. That's okay. There are some considerations on page 23 for variances. These aren't criteria, but they're things that have been recognized might, should be considered when you're looking at a variance. And as it says, determination that the criteria have been met involves balancing competing and conflicting interests, and the following may be used as guidelines as you're going through this process. Whether the situation that created a need for a variance was created by the person requesting the variance, the economic impact upon the person requesting the variance if the request has been denied, analysis of the physical impacts the development could have, such as visual noise, traffic, and increased potential for drainage, erosion, or landslide hazards, preservation of native trees, which I won't read all because it doesn't imply, and whether the proposal impacts the aesthetics of the property. So, going into your findings, a fact of which you have many pages, I'm gonna skip through them. One critical one for you to know is that the 120 days to, for the city to act on this application is up on July 16th, so there's not time to postpone your decision. We actually need to make a decision, and we need to go through that. On page 24, you'll find finding number three, A, is the motion made by the planning commission in their hearing in May. That motion was to deny the variance request of Josh Victor in regards to property address 1900 Willow, based on inconsistency with the comprehensive plan and no clear need for a variance. We'll say there were two city councilors that attended the public hearing, and when you do your declarations after my staff report, if they don't find that the information that they heard at that hearing has been included in the packet, which I tried to do, then they will need to disclose any ex parte information they have. And if there's any biases that was formed during their listening of all of that information, they could possibly need to excuse themselves from the hearing if they've already made the decision. You have the minutes from that planning commission hearing in your packets, and so I'll go through all of that. And we are including an audio cassette tape of that whole meeting in this file. So, again, trying to avoid, anybody trying to remember exactly what happened in May and avoid ex parte contact. Finding number four, it gets into your appeals. At an appeals hearing, the ordinances and criteria must be stated, and the applicant or appellant must address these criteria with sufficient specificity to allow decision-makers an opportunity to respond to the issue. So, it's not only your responsibility to look at your criteria, it's the applicant's responsibility to address those for you as well and help you in your decision-making, giving you the information you need. Finding number six is the applicant's information from the original hearing. And so, you've got all of the information from the original hearing in this packet plus tonight's information. You'll see again that the variance request on the partition was for the lot width and size, and that there was a dotted line for the property originally plotted and later combined for tax reasons that they wished to make a solid line again with two lots. Additional information that was included in this packet but is not part of your consideration, and that's a really important piece for you to remember, because it was included in the application materials, but no application filed for it, therefore it doesn't apply, but it's here. Had to do with the two homes that they proposed to put on it in the future, and how they would cite those and what variances that they would need for those. I basically won't be talking much more about that information, but had to include it in here because it wasn't part of the original packet. Finding number eight was the applicant's information for the appeal. And again, they, their statement was they were submitting a variance for the separation of a lot that had been created separately and then joined. And the planning commission was split on a decision, and they took Wolfius's vote away from him, which made it a nay. And the voting seemed worried about the lot size, which in this area, if you look at surrounding lots, would be normal, and that they planned to put manufactured homes on both lots. So, moving past all of that, the property is on the corner of Willow and 19th. That would be the southeast corner of that T intersection. The existing lot is 80 by 100 and is 8,000 square feet. It meets all current codes. It's currently vacant land. It had been occupied for, I don't know how long, 25, 35, 40 years by a single-wide manufactured home that crossed the dotted line that's in there, making that use and development of that lot, one lot, is historical use of that lot. The surrounding neighborhood and the lot sizes mentioned by the applicant, you can see in finding 14, these, I just went clockwise around the lot within basically 100 feet. You can see that the lot sizes vary in there, from the largest at 13,573 down to one lot of 2,900 square feet. So, there are three other 4,000 square foot lots, a 5,000 square foot lot, 4,300. So, the neighborhood has a mix of lot sizes in it. It's a mix of older homes and manufactured homes, basically, on all different sizes of lots. The zone is in our Otis Zone, the residential industrial transition zone. It utilizes the single-family residential zone as the basis for everything except for the home size, and it uses the R2 zone for the home size itself. At this point, those standards aren't really relevant again because they relate directly back to what homes are gonna be set on the lot. But you'll find that, in finding 15B4, the lots must be 8,000 square foot with an 80-foot front building line. Front building line is defined as being 20 feet behind the front line, the front property line, where you would normally be able to first start setting a home. Lot coverage at 35% is required by that zone as well. So, for the proposed lots, I can't think about that. The proposed parcels would be, would be 50 foot by 80 foot, 50 foot being the front of the lot by definition, the smallest dimension on a public road. And the front building line thus is 50 foot, which requires that first variance. They would then both be just under 4,000 square feet, which is the second floor on Lot coverage for those 4,000 square foot lots would be 1,400 square feet on each parcel. And they would have some interesting buildable areas. The one parcel would end up with a buildable area, which is the area, after we take all the setbacks dimensions out, that left that little block in the middle that you can actually build in. The one would have 13,000, 1,350 square feet of buildable area, and then the other would have 1,650 square feet of buildable area. So, there's certainly an area in there after you remove all the setback areas to put in a home of 1,000 square foot to meet our code into a carport or garage. Domestic water is proposed from a well, and it'd be a shared well. And there's a number of these shared wells down in this neighborhood. There is no city water available to these properties. There is city sewer available to them. There's also no city drainage system for stormwater. You'll find your infrastructure information on page 28 of your staff report. One of the, those would need the engineering report on half-street improvements that would be required on those streets, both 19th and Willow, on the corner lot and the interior lot both, and those would be coming as part of their building from that. On page 29, I took the findings of fact that I've put into the staff report, and some of which we just talked about, into the criteria list to try to help you. As you go through and you're making your decision, you need to see if your criteria have been met. So, I could go through all of those. We could review those or not review those. You can use them as a guideline for yourself to see if they've been met. You may agree or not agree, whether I put them in the right categories. But you need to go through that same kind of a process yourself. If you agree with these and you get to a motion, you can make it based on the criteria being met, based on the findings of fact. So, it's kind of, it's there for you to use if you want to use it. So, for the variance, I'm gonna leave it at that now. If you get through that decision, then we'll go on to the partition. It's gonna be simpler than that. Variance to the front setback, front setback, now you've got me confused. Variance to the front building line of 50 foot rather than 80 foot, and a lot size of 4,000 square foot instead of 8,000 square foot.
And so, we're talking about which lots?
Which lots? One lot, I'm sorry. It would be tax lot 3,000, that's that corner lot being split in half.
Clarification, distance between the two trailers?
We wouldn't know that until it was time to look at, you know, the building permits that they would be submitting and or if they were submitting a variance request as they suggested, looking at it then. But the setbacks in there would dictate a minimum of, on the interior lot, on the interior lot on the west side would be a five-foot setback requirement, and on the corner lot on the east side, which would be the two that they would be bumping up again, would also be a five-foot setback, so potentially a minimum of 10 feet. Yeah, ex parte and biased declarations.
Okay. Everybody have answers, questions at this point? Okay. Does anybody have any conflict of interest?
No.
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 Any ex parte information?
I was present at this hearing for the planning committee.
Is there anything brought up there that is not brought up in this?
Not that I've seen, so no.
I do have information in that I was personally addressed with, I believe, the applicant. And basically, it was just a presentation of the facts and the way that they disagreed with the decision. And my recommendation at that point was to either speak with you or address it in the council setting.
I have none.
I spoke with the applicant, and we did not get into any particulars at all.
I was also at that meeting, and I addressed my concerns at that time, and I, I don't think I have any conflict at all.
All right. At this time then, if there's no further questions from counsel...
Did you do bias? Bias?
Conflict of interest?
Ex parte.
Ex parte.
And bias.
And bias. Do you have any bias?
No.
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 It's not on my list to ask.
We need an update.
Yes. So, we'll start off with the applicant, his or her agent. Come forward, explain what's going on, and we'll go from there.
Good evening. My name is Frank Walker. My firm is Frank Walker and Associates, 1480 Jamestown Street, southeast Salem, Oregon, 97302. And I am representing Northern Investments. They are a longtime client of mine, actually. I'd like to start the presentation by just saying that I was hired to examine this case and its worthiness of going forward, and my advice to the clients is to drop the case ostensibly. With respect to the approval criteria, I think they are challenged to be convincing about it. However, there were a lot of things that came up the hearing that concerned me greatly about the attitudes of housing and the types of housing your community has. And with your indulgence, I would like to address some of those things that came out of that hearing. For the record, we will not further pursue either the partitioning or the variance.
Tonight?
That's correct. We'll not pursue it. And that was my counsel to them. It isn't one legal lot of record. I think, given the small size of lots, they would have to have a lot of accompanying variances. And variances are really implied denial. It means you can't really meet the code requirements, and it's really very discretionary on the parts of cities. I've sat where you are. I was on Salem City Council, and we were always counseled that variances have a very high bar. I think they'd have a challenge, and we really didn't want to challenge you either to have to make a hard decision tonight. So, we kind of made it easier for you, hopefully. With that said though, I've been with the Victors for 10 years, and I've watched their business evolve, be it businesses and enterprises. And I am impressed by what I've seen when I first met them and what I see now. I see a portion of your town that used to be referred to as felony flats, and I don't mean that as an insult, because I believe your motto up there, Sweet Home is Oregon at its best. But there were, there was a portion of town, and there was a lot of dilapidated housing, and they've replaced a lot of it with manufactured homes. And I'd see these homes before they were placed in lots, as they were not even blocked or set up yet. And the transformation of these manufactured homes is very impressive. It's been very positive, in fact. And Josh, who used to sit on the council, Josh Victor, asked me to read a letter into the record. So, if I may, I'd like to read that. "To the city of Sweet Home, the separation of lots on Willow Street. My name is Joshua Victor. I live at 44004 Wiley Creek in Sweet Home, Oregon. I apologize that I was unable to be here in person, but I had plans that I could not change already set. First, I'd like to start by saying that I appreciate everyone taking time out of their day to show up for these meetings. I realize that it's a volunteer position, and not all these meetings are fun and entertaining. I am here today to speak about breaking up the lot on the corner of 1900 Willow Street in Sweet Home. First off, I want to be clear that I didn't just purchase the property at 1900 Willow Street in Sweet Home and say, huh, I wonder if I can split this into two, because it already has a dotted line down the middle of the county plan, plot plan. No, I did quite a bit of due diligence, speaking of this property with code enforcement and Carol Lewis and even the building department for years prior to purchasing it. Now, when I spoke with all of our city departments, when there were heaps of garbage all the way around the property located at 1900 Willow Street, and asked them would I be able to divide the property, upon conclusion of all the meetings with all the departments, I received the same answer. I would have to get a variance to split the lot into two lots, since the city had changed its code to have lot sizes of no less than 8,000 square feet. I asked the city if they would have any problems with the variance, or would it be unlikely to go through. Once again, each department said that most lots in the area were of similar size, and as long as the residents in the area didn't have a problem with the variance, it would most likely go through. I explained as well to the city that this lot was listed at double the price that it was worth, and as any of the firefighters could attest to, there was heaps of garbage piled on the property that were well over 10 feet tall. Between the price of the lot and the massive amount of garbage to be removed, the lot was not at all desirable to anyone. On a side note, I had complained to the city several times, as well as all of the neighbors in the area, about the huge piles of garbage. And then, once it lit on fire, we complained about the smell of the burnt wet garbage that was all over the property. The city said they could do nothing, and again recommended I buy it and clean it up. So, had I not purchased this property, I'm pretty sure there would still be heaps of garbage over my head stinking down there. When I applied for the variance to split the lot, imagine my surprise when the only opposing party for the separation were the city departments. And not only do they oppose the variance for separation, but they spent the whole time for the lot variance talking about the homes that I'm going to put on the lots rather than the split of the lot itself. Mr. Wolfius was one of the most informed members of the planning, I think he admitted the word commission, that kept informing the committee that all the lots in that area were similar sizes, and that was not uncommon to have lots that size in the area. Even with this information, the planning was split on a decision of three to three, and then they told Mr. Wolfius that his vote would not count. I would like to take a moment to reassure the city, as well as all my homes are up to code and pass all the building inspections. Any rumors that these homes are substandard or removed from the tax rules or scheduled to be demolished are just ridiculous. In the past, I've never addressed hearsay, which there is a lot of in this town. When it starts to affect my business and the public's opinion of my homes, I figured I better respond to give everyone accurate information. I welcome everyone in the room to stop down in the area and look at the work that's been done. I also want you to think back just five short years ago and tell me if any of you would be caught going down in this area before it was cleaned up. I know that even now, I'm still trying to clean up the stigma of homes on, quote, "that side of the railroad tracks." In closing, I would like to apologize for the length of this letter and say, I love this town. I was raised here. I am heavily invested, and I plan on living in this town my whole life. I would not do things that would make it junky, dirty, or unsafe. I have many other plans as well to help develop this town. I look forward to seeing our economy and our people rise with it. I would like to thank everybody here for their most valuable asks at their time and look forward to the further development of our town for the future. Sincerely, Josh Victor." I have here the highlighted testimony from some of the council, I guess it'd be in minutes. This is basically a booklet that shows the homes in the area, also the current mobile homes that have been placed. And I think Mr. Victor wanted this in the record so you could see the quality. And I must concur that I come in and out of town, I do the permits, I come back a year later, and these homes are in place, and they are a vast improvement over what I would see initially. And I'm just gonna go ahead. You distribute this? Thank you. When I took this case on feasibility, I always try to interject economics into my cases because you should be doing something for which there's a demand, otherwise, don't bother the planning commission. because you should be doing something for which there's a demand. Otherwise, don't bother the planning commission, the council. I know I felt that way when I was on the council. And I went through all the 50 applications they currently have for housing. I read these carefully and the age of the people and what their circumstances are. And in the end, we really are talking about people. And people need shelter. They need housing. The late, great baseball player Jackie Robinson said, "What our people need most is housing, even maybe more than education." And I'd have to agree that in reading these heartfelt applications, that there's a demand here and there's an available size of lot in the town and housing availability types to kind of make this an attractive area to rent homes. And I mean, they have a lot of them. They could tell you the number, but these are the ones I reviewed here alone. But I still recommend that they not proceed with the partitioning and variance. I have here some packets for distribution. And in this, they have information addressing some of the concerns that were raised by concerned citizens who attended the meeting. And they just wanted to dispel some things that I think are believed about manufactured homes. And I've worked in the manufacturing home industry and I know Don Minor, they're the state lobbyists for the State Manufactured Housing Association. And I think there's still some perceptions that these homes are less inhabitable or unsafe or unsightly. But I'm going to give this to you and you can thumb through these maybe while I continue to finish my presentation.
Are they all the same?
Yes. Thank you. I do other cases in other communities around Oregon. Sometimes they involve housing types. I was in Molalla, Oregon, and we inventoried all of their multifamily housing in town. And there's quite a big building boom going on there now and a lot of apartments are coming in. We were rezoning a property because we knew the demand was there and the city was very supportive of the conference plan amendment, zone change, to introduce more land for apartments. And a lot of people came into the hearing room and made comments, and one of them was, "We don't want those kind of people in our town." Well, I've been one of those kind of people before. I lived in apartments. And the fact of the matter is, is we have statewide planning goal 10. This is it right here. I'm going to read you some excerpts from this goal statement, what it says. And this is what guides your comprehensive plan, the same plan that's been affirmed by two Oregon Supreme Court decisions, that the plan takes precedence over everything. You have to follow your comprehensive plan. Your zoning's a way to implement that plan. But it says, "to provide for the housing needs of citizens of the state, including providing adequate numbers of needed housing units at price ranges and rent levels which are commensurate with the financial capabilities of Oregon households and allow for flexibility of housing location, type, and density." Manufactured homes means structures with a Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD label certifying that the structure is constructed in accordance with the National Manufactured Housing Construction and Safety Standards Act of 1974. So since 42 years ago, manufactured homes have been very strictly regulated by HUD and their construction standards. Now, they may place some homes that are older than that, but anything after that meets pretty strict compliance. And I've actually taken the Uniform Building Code of the United States of America and compared it to HUD. And there's really fundamentally no differences between them. Now, I know manufactured homes got a bad rap for the gray ABS water pipes that failed and other things, but a lot of contractor-built homes developed problems after the fact, including a very serious one, mold, because they're built during wet weather sometimes or left exposed to elements and the net moisture can be trapped in the house. I have visited many factories where manufactured homes are made. They're made indoors. They're made with 18% kiln-dried lumber. They are, when the walls are constructed, they're within steel frameworks where there's no tolerance for Boeing and other things because these homes have to be transported down highways and sometimes maybe many miles. And it kind of dispels some of your myths and beliefs about them as a housing type. And some are very impressive. In fact, they're becoming more like manufactured homes all the time. But they're really nothing new. Serious manufactured homes in the 19th century, many of which adorned the streets of Portland and Dallas and other communities in the state. So they're not a new phenomenon. But the goal 10 housing elements states, "needed housing units" means housing types determined to meet the needs shown for housing within an urban growth boundary at particular price ranges and rent levels, and it includes manufactured homes. In the planning guidelines, it says, "a comparison of the distribution of the existing population by income and the distribution of available housing units by cost is a requirement." You have to allow for a variety of densities and types of residences in each community. And such lands should be necessary and suitable for housing that meets the housing needs of households of all income levels. There have been Supreme Court rulings on discriminatory housing and redlining. One of the premier ones was in Arlington, Illinois. They tried to zone all apartments out of town. And eventually, the Supreme Court ruled that they could not do that. So I guess my message to you tonight is to be receptive to the fact that manufactured homes don't quite have that stigma they once had. Maybe it'll never disappear, but I think the Victors do provide a needed range of housing types in this community. And they are in pretty nice condition once they place them and they all meet your building inspector's requirements. I mean, they're inspected and they're stamped as suitable for habitation. I'd gladly answer any questions the council has. And we may be back on other cases, but at least we wanted to clear the air on some of the testimony that was given and that we understand that maybe people don't want to live next door to a manufactured home in a certain neighborhood. But as a community, there is an obligation to provide for all housing types and income levels. Thank you for your time tonight.
I'm not sure whether it's the, whether we need to close the hearing now or should we ask? Is there anything more for the record?
They withdrew their application.
That's what I'm saying.
Right.
It's done and so what you wanted is on the record. So I think anything, any other questions that we would have do not need to be on the record. But I do have a couple for staff. At this time, we'll close the public hearing at 8:09. Our existing, what we have as far as existing policy on manufactured homes, what's the date of manufacture on those?
We don't put a date on manufacturing on them. What we do is set a standard, not only for manufactured homes, but for all housing in the city. It's not separated. It's not distinguished. Houses in the R1 zone, which is applicable land, have to be 28 wide. They have to be at least 1,000 square foot and have a 312 pitch roof. The only thing special about manufactured's in our codes talk about the foundation systems because they're different than they are for a site-built home. But all homes have to meet the same standard, 28 wide, 312 pitch roof, and 1,000 square feet.
So when...
Or 24 wide in your R2 zone.
In some of our areas that you have trailers in, those are, there's a date on those, correct?
That we have.
Trailer houses.
Older mobile homes.
Older mobile homes, yes.
There isn't a date that we're setting for them. We got rid of a date which was set in the mobile home, mobile home infill overlay zone. We deleted, yeah, I was trying to think.
I remember, I remember all that, but I'm trying to get, I'm trying to remember.
It was the mid-'90s when we got rid of that and set a standard, I think it was in '96, that said, you know, we're not going to distinguish between a mobile home and a site-built home. They're all going to be meet the same 28 wide, 312 pitch roof standard.
I couldn't remember what we did on that, but I wanted to be refreshed. And so, just for, that is an important thing because people ask, well, how old is the manufactured home or whatever? As long as it fits criteria.
It meets the standard of the zone.
It meets the standard in the zone.
We don't look at the year.
We don't look at the year.
We don't.
Okay.
But doesn't HUD have a pretty high standard for anything built before a certain time?
Yeah, the HUD building codes, so to speak, came in in 1976. So pre-1976 weren't meeting the HUD standards, which sets things like emissions control for formaldehydes, insulation standards, and those have changed over the years and certain states like, such as Oregon, have adopted higher ones over the years. And so, there's a lot of different ones. But '76 was the magical HUD number that reviews your insulation and some of those wiring types, going away from aluminum wiring, I believe it was, to copper wiring and some of that. That date did use to be in our code. That was one of the dates that we eliminated and just said that you just need to meet the standard of the zone.
There was something else with pre-'76, trailers did not have a 312 pitch, if I remember right.
Almost none of them did. When we set that standard, we were looking at new mobile homes, our manufactured homes by that point. They were mobile homes pre-'76. They became manufactured dwellings after that. The 28 wide was not the norm for those older homes. It was 24, single wides are 24s. We set our standard at 28 with a pitched roof for the specific purpose of upgrading housing within the city of Sweet Home.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes.
Is this something that should be looked at and revised? I mean, when I hear it, I hear a lot of gray areas, which isn't fair for people that want to do something and on the other side, too. Is this something that should be looked into to see if the criteria is still applicable for what we have as today?
That's what I was trying to get at.
There's a lot of answers to that question. Planning Commission has been, as you two know, you were at that meeting, has been having this discussion for, before I came back on, as to how to do it. And certainly, those are ongoing. They, at their meeting last night, had further discussions on the manufactured home standards, how to judge safety, health-related issues in relationship to manufactured homes. And some of those, you know, we're working on and coming up with suggested potential changes to address the fire hazard that we heard about from the foundation systems where your aluminum siding, you use it as skirting, can flash and going, taking it just to the concrete block or some sort of non-burnable type of a foundation, skirting-type system. Really minor changes so far that we're seeing that might be necessary to help everybody be more comfortable with what those standards are. And again, you know, it's in the zoning code. If it's in the zoning code, you can always take a variance to it. So I don't, no matter what you do in a zoning code, you're going to be able to take a variance to it and some of them will have some sort of an issue at some point. If it's in building code, there's no variances for it. The building codes are much stricter in that, so we're looking at the difference of those, whether some things from planning should be moved into building if they're really safety issues. And I think that conversation will continue going on. It's scheduled to go on in August, again, at the August 1st Planning Commission meeting. So, and that's going to be a work session meeting and that will be just one of the pieces that's going to be discussed that night. But we're going to continue working on that. It would be good to have a joint meeting with council to know what your feelings all are. Certainly, way before any drafting of language starts being done. And then it would go through a full-blown, inviting the public, having all those comments come in and take a fairly long while to get adopted in any new standards. But there's some pretty simple fixes to our existing code that I don't think are going to be problematic. They won't eliminate the need for variances. I don't see us doing that, no matter what we do.
Are these work sessions open to the public or...
Yes.
I would like to ask a question, just out of curiosity, but I don't know the answer to this, but I think there's some people in this audience probably would like to hear the answer to this as to why Vice Chair Wolfius's vote was taken away.
I honestly can't answer that. I wasn't staffing that meeting. It makes no sense to me.
Makes no sense because then it takes away your quorum.
Yeah, historically, right. Historically, the Planning Commission always let the chair vote on all matters because they're a citizen board and the citizen opinion matters, including the chairs. And they didn't follow the Roberts Rules of Order. The chair is the tiebreaker. Something changed in there and I'm not sure when or why.
I don't think that the council needs an answer to that question.
And you've got some planning commissioners here that might be able to answer that question. I wasn't present, so I really don't know. Eva? Just because he was the chair?
Yeah, he was the chair that night. He was not the vice chair. He was, the new chair had not been elected yet, and so he was the chair.
But he still doesn't have a say? It's the witcher's hand.
Well, the chair votes in case of a tie.
That's what they were thinking.
Yeah, I don't know when that...
I don't see that that is in the ordinance that way, but that's what they were thinking and that's why it was death.
Yeah.
That's what they were thinking. They were thinking that they were correct in their interpretation.
Yeah.
And I don't see it in the ordinance.
Not a great answer, but that's what we had.
So if it were a tie, what would that mean?
We had a tie in a vote last night and the chair broke the tie.
Well, if it were a tie...
I don't know how Henry would have voted. I was, again, I wasn't there. I wasn't privy to the conversation, so...
No, I'm asking the question. I mean, if it was a tie and there's no chair.
Well, if it's a tie, then it's a no, it's a no-go.
It's a no, same as a, same as a...
A nay vote.
A nay vote.
Sure. But I'm under the impression that wasn't the case here.
Well, that may not have been.
May not have been.
Didn't they say somewhere, Mr. Mayor, that the vote was 32 and his would have been a 3-3 tie? Is that the way that was? Yeah, that's why I remembered. So it really wouldn't have made any difference to be devoted or not. In this particular instance, if that's, if it's 3-3 tie, says no, then it would have made no difference. And I think Laura, when she was, it was her last meeting, by the way, but I think she tried to explain that. I'm not sure if that's true. Mike, do you remember how that...
I wasn't.
Yeah, but I think that's the way that would have worked. So it would have been, like, unless a 3-3 tie, it wouldn't have gone anywhere. And I don't, you correct me if I'm wrong, Counselor. I think that's the way that worked and I'm not sure.
I think that, you know, from what I've seen of that and that it came up again last night, that the commission needs to go back and probably as part of one of their work sessions, talk about their process again. I don't know if they did that with Laura and set new procedures out for the way they're going to operate. But it certainly wasn't the way we always operated and so I'm just a little as confused as you over on that issue.
Well, I remember Chairman Wolfius making a statement due to the fact that it was off or odd off a little bit because one of the guys that used to be there wasn't there anymore. So it kind of had an odd count to the vote.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I was at that meeting and my biggest concern with my history in the fire service was obviously safety. And I talked to Chief Behringer today again and verified that we've had, since recorded in 2003, we've had six deaths in homes and four of them were manufactured homes. And to deny that they burn faster is absolutely not true. I've been in many, 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 many manufactured homes and they burn faster than a structured house. There's no getting around that. And the older they are, the worse it is, okay? And I'm not saying that Josh doesn't take good care of the ones that he's doing. I have no doubt that that happens. I really don't. The inspection problem is an issue with me. I don't know how we get to that point where we can make sure that everything is up to code and I'm sure we do, and I don't know how that works exactly. I've talked to Mike about that. And so that's my biggest concern. When we have a manufactured home fire, I just cringe because it's, it is... The newer, the older ones are just, just not very good, you know? And I know you folks know that. I know that. And I know you do what you can to make that better and I appreciate that. And, but anyway, that's kind of where I stood on that whole thing and so... And of course, this little thing here says the manufactured home industry is saying that it doesn't, you know? And I'm sure that they would be biased of that and I would be biased on the fireside. So, you know, you have to, you have to weigh one against the other and the safety is the biggest issue for all of us. I know that. So that was my biggest concern. And I'm not saying we shouldn't put them in there. I just think we should be very careful.
Okay.
I appreciate your time.
So, I have a question. I have a question of you folks. What, was there something else that you thought that we needed to do as far as ordinance?
Well, just the fact that...
Make sure you state your name and address.
Daniel Victor. Just wanted to get under the council so that goes on record. And the statements and some of those remarks about conditions of the mobile homes that we're picking up, we bought them and we bought them from mobile home distributors as well as all personal. And they're, according to, if you read those, they've got a stigma of being junk and that's something I wanted to clear up here because they're not. And everybody on the council, anyone here can come and see any mobile homes. Now, Mike's approved everyone that we've done and he's went through every one. And I just want to make that statement clear so it's understood and on the record. When I, we had that hearing, we had the impression that we were handling a bunch of junk. That's what I got. And that's the reason you each have a packet so you can go through them at your own time so we don't tie this whole thing up all night. So, that's all I'd say.
We do appreciate the information you brought forward.
Okay. Anything further? All right. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I think we'll skip down to number eight and explain where we're at on the, on the ranking of our, of our different...
H?
Page. We ranked our candidates from one to ten. We had two candidates that had a statistical tie. Diane Gerson and Andrew Allen had a statistical tie of fifty-six total points. And we have a list of where people were ranked here. And this will be public record if anybody wants to see it. I'm not sure. I have a list here of whenever I totaled them up so that we have the top to the bottom. And when they, I asked them to pick a, between the two, pick one, number one and the number two. And they did that. And statistically, I did not vote at that point because there was already four votes for Diane Gerson and one for Andrew Allen at that point. And, but on my original ballot, I had Diane Gerson on my original ballot. So, as that goes, I would entertain a motion from the council.
So moved.
To...
Point Diane Gerson to the City Council to fulfill the term twelve-thirty-one of this year to replace, replace Hobbs. I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion passes with five ayes and one absent and one not...
Filled.
Filled yet. So, at this time, I'd ask Diane Gerson to come forward, please. Sean, do you still need these? Why, they're part of... Okay. Well, actually, we have to swear you in first. So, we need you to, to come up here to the front. Turn this direction. And this is your swear...
Not literally.
Right hand up? Yes, right hand up and repeat after me. I, Diane Gerson.
I...
Go ahead.
I, Diane Gerson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon...
And of the State of Oregon.
The ordinance of the City of Sweet Home...
The ordinance of the City of Sweet Home.
And the council code of conduct...
And the council code of conduct.
And to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully discharge the duties of counselor...
I will faithfully discharge the duties of counselor...
Of said city...
Of said city.
During the period for which I was elected...
During the period for which I was elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Just so you know, we made funds for all of them tonight.
Official signature card. Yes. And there's also a code of conduct that we need you to fill out. What's that? Yeah. Jan, what was that? Body houses. None of those. I don't even know what that is, but it sounds that.
Got to get a legal review here.
Yes.
So, we did the right...
Oh, will you do it again? Maybe.
You just, you being president.
I don't think so.
Got it? If everything's there, then fine.
The only difference, it doesn't say duties of the office, but it does say the council...
Duties of the council.
Okay, just read.
And the duty of, the discharge, the duties of counselor. Does that suffice?
I just, if it's there, it's there. If it isn't, then just read this too.
Okay, we have to...
This is our nighttime reading...
Because it's the, a little bit different than what charter is, we have to make sure it's the same as what the charter was.
The Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state, the ordinance of the sweet home. Let's try it again.
It's not that, it's like this difference, but I put it in the charter.
Okay. Want to make sure it's right.
All right. It's history in the banking industry. I, Diane Gerson...
I, Diane Gerson.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon...
And of the State of Oregon.
The ordinances of the City of Sweet Home...
The ordinances of the City of Sweet Home.
And the council code of conduct...
And the council code of conduct.
And to the best of my ability...
And to the best of my ability.
I will faithfully discharge...
I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of counselor...
The duties of counselor.
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office...
And will faithfully perform the duties of the office.
Of said city...
Of said city.
During the period for which I was elected...
During the period for which I was elected.
So help me God.
Now we got it. Okay.
That means she's got two votes?
Oh, yeah.
Well, tonight, maybe. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
And I, thank you for everybody else coming tonight. It was really exciting that we had that many people want to be on the council. And I know that we have a couple people already signed up to run in the fall and that's exciting. So, I appreciate that a lot. Going on? Exactly. Perfect idea. We do have vacant boards and commissions that we have positions and if anybody's interested in serving on those positions, I don't have those in front of me, but we'll make sure that our next council meeting, or if you come to the city manager, she will get you a list of all the vacant positions. And if you're interested, you can go ahead and put in your, your name for those positions also. And we do have some positions for people that live out of town, Teresa. So, if anybody's interested. Next one on the agenda is item B under new business, request for council action, recruitment strategy for city... Nothing on there under old business. Did you have something?
He was like giving an update on the purchase of the forestry building.
Okay, there's nothing under old business, but I will...
Okay. In response to Hank Bird asking about surveys and past surveys, we did do, did check surveys. We have an approximate, so picture surveys. And I do have a bug, we have a test inspector, rotten test inspector coming up tomorrow morning, nine o'clock, we're going to do a bug in rotten section for us. And we'll do diligence, just like you buy a house, you buy a family termites with it, so you're having to come out and take a look back.
What is this?
Thanks.
This is where it actually... But this is their... One to talk about is to give listeners to that portion of Walker's part.
You did also request that we got information from contractors and data to track together with contractors for again some subject quotes for you that you have, should have in your package.
Does everybody have the opportunity to look at these out there if anybody wants to?
And I will also put them online.
If anybody wants to, they can come up and look at mine up here if they want.
It's the surveys for the forestry department.
Yes.
When you and my cannon entertained the input from contractors, is that, is that over or are we still...
No, no.
Talk about that.
Well, the city manager has information...
Was just to get an idea of opportunities or what the approximate cost would be. So, we had something to go by.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor, the reason that, we have to make a decision soon and the reason I, we tried to rush that through and it was really hard for the contractors because they didn't have a lot of time to, and these are just estimates. This is not a, it's not a solid figure. But to the best of their ability with the information that they got when they walked through with us, this is what they came up with. So, and then the prevailing wage thing came up. Kristi called me about that and she talked to one of the contractors about that. I don't know, it's easy to get a hold of the other one. But those are local guys. Doesn't mean we can get as many as we need or want. I mean, that was never my intent and I don't think it was my intent either. We just thought we'd try to, because the council asked if we could get somewhere in the ballpark. And the two that we got were about what I assumed that they would be around. And also, the HVAC guy, the fellow here in town, he quoted approximately thirteen to twenty thousand for events for the ducts and those kinds of things, but without being able to access it. And we discussed at length, the HVAC system that's on the roof and we don't think that that's going to be the proper way to go. So, we, this is kind of still up in the air a little bit, but I was pretty, pretty pleased with the estimates we got to a degree.
I was just asking, because I was approached tonight by a contractor who wanted to know if they still had a chance to...
Absolutely.
But ask.
Because this is just, this is just preliminary. This is just something that we wanted to get some sort of an idea. Any contractor will, they'll go out for bid, I'm assuming.
Yes.
So, you know, when the time...
The community wanted to know what this was going to cost...
Yeah.
Before we voted on it.
And the best part...
That's what they asked. So, we tried to get the best idea of what it was going to cost us to do this building so that when we made this decision, we weren't making a decision that was going to be more than what, way more than what we had anticipated. So, yes, Kristi?
So, we did receive two bids in for the work and when they came in...
Two estimates.
Two, two estimates to perform the work. And one of the contractors actually indicated that the prevailing wage costs were not included in the initial estimate. And so, I looked at the other proposal that had been submitted and that one was silent on the issue of the prevailing wages. And that's, you know, been one of my concerns as we've had prior to discussions is making sure, because the price seems like a very reasonable price, given that prevailing wage costs are included. So, I asked the Keith Woolley, who was one of the contractors who specified that the prevailing wage was not included, to resubmit his proposal, including the prevailing wage provision. And he did that and that number is before you tonight in the package, the colored copy. And so, that estimate does include the prevailing wage estimate. When I spoke with Mr. Woolley, he indicated that this is just to bring the building up, like, there's no really modifications to the building in the proposal. It's putting the sheet rock back, putting carpeting in, putting the duct work in, utilizing the existing HVAC. Those types of things are included. So, it's just to get the building up to where it would be usable again. And he included commercial-grade carpeting. We did have a discussion about that HVAC unit. It's unknown to us whether it's operational. The duct work has been removed. And, you know, in, in our discussion, he thought that we might want to consider another alt option, maybe going with ductless units. So, as we progress with this project, if you choose to move forward with the purchase, those will be issues that we would look at. When I spoke with, let's see, it's Ryan from Savage and Smothers Construction, they were the other party that submitted the proposal. I asked them about the prevailing wage. When they prepared their estimate, he indicated they don't have employees, so they'd probably be serving like as the general contractor and their subcontractors would be responsible for payment of the prevailing wage. And he said, quite honestly, he hadn't visited with all of the subcontractors prior to submitting this because of the short time period. But he took into account what he thought, you know, the cost would be for those contracts based on other projects that they've done. So, I think that, you know, this cost, it would give you a good place to start if you're just wanting to bring the building back to its original use and layout. It wouldn't include taking down walls, changing the layout and adding offices, that type of thing, but it is possible to do that in phases. It's not actually required and those are all decisions you can make. So, I'd like to think, you know, Councilor Trask, for his leadership in getting the contractors there to get us this, the quotes and meeting with all of them and so that you kind of have a basis to take action and make your decision on how you want to move forward with the property.
We also went on the roof and that roof's in excellent condition. The roof's like about ten years, Mike, if I'm not mistaken, about ten years in on thirty-year roof.
And I did...
And that, and the flat roof's got a lifetime membrane surface.
I did talk to Keith Woolley about that, asked him if he had any specific concerns that maybe we hadn't noticed before during his inspection. He did mention that there had been a leak on the west end, but he thought that because of the fabric membrane that that really wasn't a major issue to be concerned about. So, he did make reference to that in our conversation today.
Yeah, he was talking about, we're on the duct work.
Yeah, he was talking about, we're on the duct work, one side of the building, was that?
And I believe our building inspectors had noticed that area as well, they weren't overly concerned about it either.
If I could kind of mention it now, maybe not a lot of people know about prevailing wage. They're used to understanding that prevailing wage is because we are a public agency set to serve the public trust, that we have to pay to make sure that contractors and people who come to work on projects are paid a wage that is prevalent, prevalent to a living wage in that area. So what I did is I went online, then printed off, just because there are information prevailing the definition, what covered activities or reconstruction renovations actually airing down to that require a dollar amount. So if there's any question about what we need to look at as a project for prevailing wage, I did the summary sheet off of the website and the booklet, which is very hard to read. But I figured, well, the summary sheet will help. Because I've gone out, we've done prevailing wage on all of our buildings, and I've been the prevailing wage compliance officer on, on the three major ones. So there are certain rules we have to follow that unfortunately tend to raise, increase the price, but keeps us in line with the state. So if anybody needs any information on it, I had kind of highlighted areas that, that are more than important. Anything over fifty thousand dollars for the entire project, you can't keep smelling out. But cases in line with the state.
We need to read this tonight.
Yeah.
Actually, an attorney is doing everything, he's a law. Okay, there you go. But the state sets rates that we have to follow within our town and our regional areas to ensure that contractors are paid.
Figure out how to fold this thing. Okay, any other questions from, anybody on what's going on, Teresa?
Teresa Brown, two seven nine one nine, Dixiel Road, Foster, Oregon. I do have a question about, is the, is it open, open for bid on that?
We haven't, we haven't bought the building yet. What we're trying to find out is, is it something we wanna buy if we were to? We just got some estimates of what it would take to get it back to original there, so just.
Usable condition.
Just, yeah.
Okay, so how did you pick the two contractors?
I just picked two that I know, and that's, not, not personally.
So there's no process, it's just you?
No.
And it'll, it'll be.
This isn't being, it isn't being, you're worst, we're, the bidding process is over here, we're clear back over here.
That's fine, that's just part of my question. And the other is, I'm a project manager by profession. Do you have a list, one of the things I've noticed when I built my house, and a couple of other properties that I had, was I had a list of the items that I wanted the folks to come and give me a bid or an estimate on. Did you have a general estimate list that said, these are the things we want you to look at?
No.
Come back, so the consistency between the estimates were there?
We don't have that direction from the council yet. We don't know what improvements they want to the facility. They're just seeking, they're inquiring from contractors about what they think it may cost to bring the, the building back up to usable condition. And then, once they determine what budget they have available, then we'll have a process where they determine what elements they'd like to see in the facility, and we would, we would tailor the bidding process to that.
Yeah, and I would recommend that, because I've seen that sort of budget get out of control.
Exactly.
Is that you don't define upfront exactly what you want to be delivered, so that everyone gives an equal evaluation of what they can do, what the cost is for us.
Right.
I think one of the big things that we're looking at out there is, we may not have to revamp the entire building to make it usable to start off with, but we wanted to get an idea of maybe what it would cost to, to, if we've got it up to a certain level. And, but now we, we have a good understanding of about what it would cost, so we can probably make a decision whether we wanna go forward or not. And then, then we'll go out with formal, a formal idea of what we want. Well, before we go out with the bid process, we'll go out with a formal idea of what we want from our employees and from our, our staff, as far as how much area we need, what configuration, and all that. And if anybody's been out there, there's, the bathrooms are, are like huge. And there's like seven or eight different stalls, so I don't think we'll need that many. And so there's some things that need to be revamped, and, and we'll have to go, go from there. But I think we need to get it all in there.
To comment on, on the, the process I used, I, I asked four contractors. One wasn't interested because of prevailing wage, and he's just an independent, he does his own, he doesn't have employees. And the other one said he could not possibly get the thing done by this Tuesday. Otherwise, he would have been very happy to have put in a bid, so it's not like we were, anyway. So that's kind of where I went, and we, the time constraint was the biggest problem, for all four of them, actually. So, anyway, but.
There's, there's also the process, as you'll know, what's the needs of the city.
Yeah.
There's also resources we need to look into, like Oregon Energy Trust, you know.
Right, but I just, I'm concerned because I keep hearing that we're doing things. Well, we only had so much time, we only had so much time. And I'm gonna tell you, defining your requirements upfront is one of the things.
Exactly. Well, that's, that's the next step. If we decide we want the building, the next step is figure out what we want in that building. And that's gonna take community and our staff to come up with a plan.
And I need to have payment to the decision that's been made by next Friday, the twenty.
So it needs to be tonight.
Well, we still have a. We still have our termite, and basically, certainly would be, it certainly would be appropriate to have your, whether you're for or against it type of deal. But the twenty second at five, basically it's, we're intuitive unless we, unless we come up with a contingency that.
I think the, the decision could be made pertinent upon whether.
Yeah.
It passes termite inspection. Yeah, rotten termite. Okay. All right, so I guess, at this point, if people want, if there's a motion to move forward with this, I guess this would be the place to do it.
Make a motion, contingency on the, the rotten, dry rot, still thinking you'd have that coming out.
Okay, so your motion then would be to support, or to go ahead and go along with the buying of the property?
Buying of the city hall, contingency on the dry rot inspection, which is that plus.
Okay, is that okay with us?
Yeah, that's correct, I understand.
Okay. We have a second. Okay, everybody understands the motion? Okay, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I have to vote no, because I haven't read all the information on it, sorry.
Okay, motion passes.
And do you, I'm just asking now, do you, do you wanna do a roll call? I mean.
We would have to do a roll call.
Because this is where you're making your decision. To carry, spend the money and move forward.
But we made the decision to move forward, now we make a roll call to spend the money.
Okay.
Yes, so we have five voting for, one abstention, or no?
Yes, because I haven't read the information.
Okay, one abstention and one absent. Now, we have to make a motion to expend the money, which would be, Pat's getting the number for us.
Seven hundred and twenty, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, because we already paid them twenty-five thousand dollars down.
Yeah, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and then with expenses.
The motion would be to expend, to expend seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Plus the cost of sale.
Plus cost of sale, so seven twenty-five plus cost of sale.
Right, which includes your, the big one there is your realtor fee.
So, do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilor Goodman, Mayor Corley.
Aye.
Councilor Gerson.
I'm going to abstain.
Councilor Muller.
Aye.
Councilor Trask.
Aye.
Councilor Underwood.
Aye.
Councilor Grobel.
Aye.
Motion passes with five ayes, one abstention, and one absent. Okay, so now the next step then would be to set up a time to do needs assessment, and. Yeah, the next, but that's, but that's the next step that we would go through. So we'll have to set up a time to do a needs assessment and a, a community input from that after we get the needs assessment and written up, yes?
The needs assessment you're talking about is the planning and the layout of what you're actually going to do, what portion of the building you're going to bring up to the city hall.
Yes.
Now, Councilor Trask, you're familiar with the phone company and all that kind of? As far as I understand, most of the companies that provide those kind of services, phone companies, power companies, those kind of, will do assessments of what you need based upon what you have, and that's at no cost.
To, to my knowledge, to answer your question, I believe, I think the, the city has, who do they, who's their phone provider?
Century Management.
Okay, so they will come and they will tell you what's gonna cost to move this system to there, okay?
According to your layout, what you have planned, where you got those wires.
You remember the, remember when you're in that big room with all those wires going everywhere? That would be, that's, yeah, that's, they, yeah, they'll have to assess that, they'll test those wires apparently. I don't know how that's all gonna go, but they will come in and make a bid, and they will probably end up sticking to that bid, would be my guess.
But that'll have to be after the layout is set up, and then they'll define where, where we need that.
Sounds like you have.
And the internet stuff and all that stuff has to, it'll have to be taken into, into account, so. It's, it'll be, it's not gonna be an easy project, but it'll be something that's attainable. I mean, it won't be like it's gonna be, you know.
That's one of those areas, looking at the board, I see here, you're all familiar with this sort of thing, so I would rely on your knowledge of these things to keep them under control and develop them properly, to keep costs down.
My knowledge on phone, I would say, my knowledge on phone?
No.
It's been, it's been.
I wasn't talking to you, I was talking to these other guys.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks for clarifying that.
So, yeah, and so I think the next step then is we'll purchase the building, and then, then we will go ahead and set up a, a needs assessment from staff, and then propose that to the community to see if they have any suggestions. At one of our meetings, and then we'll go forward from there.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would recommend that we have an open house kind of a thing, so that anybody who wants to come. We had, we had a fair turnout, not, not what I would consider great, but it was, we had quite a few. You know, some people were there and looked the thing, and then the building looks pretty solid to us, and, and we would want everyone to know what's going on, so if anybody would be interested in that, we want them to be there. That might be a couple, three months, I don't know how long that's gonna take, but, but when that time comes, I think we should make it a public thing and get people to come and look, I mean, it's just that simple.
I think it'll take us at least a while to get, figure out what we need, and then get it drawn up, and then, then once we get it drawn up where people can actually look at it, we'll go out to the building, lay it out, and say, this is what we're looking at doing.
Pat, now, when does it have to close? Does it close in August?
Eighteenth.
No, I've gotta close next Friday.
Okay.
The twenty second, that's why.
Twenty second.
It doesn't officially close then.
It doesn't.
The twenty second is the, is the day that the contingencies need to be removed. And then the closing is not very far down the line, and at least the one that's scheduled, they might put it out a ways or anything, but it's not, I think it's like twenty ninth was the scheduled time.
That's right, it was the twenty ninth.
And so it's very close. Whether that goes on, if you've ever bought a house, whether it goes on every day, or whether they have to have a few extra days for moving their paperwork and stuff, that's. It's a short, very, very time.
Okay, so we're moving on, any more questions about the building? And if anybody wants to see the building, we can probably get some more time to go out there once we get the keys. So, recruitment strategy for city manager.
On page seventy-eight in your packet, you will see a request for council action to move forward with the adoption of reservation number nine for two thousand sixteen for the selection of a recruitment strategy. As a reminder, this was brought to you previously for consideration. And your primary options for moving forward with the strategy are to determine whether you want us as staff to perform the responsibilities of the recruitment effort, whether you would like to utilize the services offered by the local government personnel institute or Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments through the implementation of an IGA. They are governmental entities, and we have the rights to contract directly with them. Or whether you'd like to employ the third option of selecting and retaining a professional executive recruitment firm to assist in your recruitment. As you will remember, we had a special meeting where you asked me to go ahead and get started and draft the preliminary position profile, which I did. We met in a special meeting and reviewed that, the council made a few suggested changes to that recruitment effort. And so we've kind of already started the process on behalf of the city. Depending on which option you choose moving forward, we could continue to do that work on your behalf. We could do it in partnership with one of these other entities, where I could perform a portion of the work on your behalf. Or we could turn it all over to an outside entity to perform that sort of thing on your behalf. So tonight, we're looking for a decision under the, a resolution, moving that forward down on the agenda for a decision tonight, so we know what strategy we'd like to employ.
As, is everybody thoroughly familiar with the, with the options we have here? I think it changes a little bit if we're able to use our Pro Tem to do some of the, the recruitment, as we weren't sure that we were gonna be able to, but we are, we can, if the council so chooses. So, does anybody have?
Option two.
Option two. I, I'm leaning towards option two.
Just a clarification, that option two is the use of our Pro Tem and council governments?
Yes.
Okay, just to make sure, because I didn't quite say.
I'm leaning towards option two, but that's my own.
We would probably, I'm sorry, Councilor, I would just recommend that when we get to the resolution that we clarify that if you select option two in combination with the services of the city manager Pro Tem were applicable. That way I can do portion of the work where we can save money, because if, if you just say option two, that's, I wanna make sure that we understand the intent.
What it actually is, yes.
Right.
Okay, I have a quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If we're going to put this extra stuff on you, and you're already struggling with some time constraints with, with being a Pro Tem, what is that going to do to your, is it gonna make your time constraints even harder, I think? So I wonder how we're going to, how we're gonna address that? If it's gonna take time away from your daily, then you only have twenty-four hours a week, or twenty, or whatever it is. How are we going to get around taking some of that stuff, that time, to do this stuff? And I'm not against that at all, in fact, I agree, I think I, option one and option two, option two combined is a good thing. But if we're gonna be saving a bunch of money, not on how much, but if we're gonna be saving some money to, to have you take on some of these, these, this stuff, then I think, in all fairness, we need to give you the time to do it on top of what you're already doing.
So we could do, if we needed to, we could do a week, a five day. So we could do, if we needed to, we could do a week, a five-day week to do that maybe, uh, once or twice, whatever we would need.
I think that maybe, uh...
Pat, did you?
I think that, um, just if I could, um, right now, taking on additional hours, um, I'm not able to do that, but through, if, throughout this recruitment process, I would be willing to, if I needed to work, you know, a full week during, um, certain stages, I would be willing to do that, yes.
That's what I'm thinking, uh, you know, maybe if, if, from time to time, we might need a few more hours to do what we need to do, but that's, we understand that.
Yeah, we, uh, we could do that, we would need to modify my contract because it currently has a limitation of twenty hours per week.
I think we can, we can, um, do that if we need to, uh, in the future, um, whenever we get to that point. I think we'd plan, we'd look at this all along and to see what she could do, and I'm not sure, uh, whether, how much you're gonna be able to do this anyway.
So...
We'll be able to do some of it.
Yes, I will, yes, so, um, depending on which strategy you employ, we, I've already drafted the, um, advertisements, um, on behalf of the city, so, um, once you say who you're gonna utilize, if we, uh, we will plug that information in to finalize agreement, so we know where we're directing the applications and the resumes to. We've got that draft ready to go, um, and Julie will be ready to send off the advertisements, um, as early as tomorrow, so we can begin the advertisement period, we're already to that stage, so that's the next step. And then, um, Mayor, you missed the meeting while you were, um, on vacation, but we've set a preliminary schedule, um, and today, um, I have already sought quotes from both LGPI and the Call, um, in case the council selected that, so we would be timely moving forward. And so, um, they've both supplied quotes to me, and, um, I'm certainly able to, um, award one of those quotes based on my, um, purchasing threshold and, um, authorization under the charter. And, um, so once I know if that's something that you want to do, um, I'm ready to go proceed with a contract with one of those entities. My only thing is waiting to make sure that they meet our timelines, 'cause we have a pretty tight schedule that we set during our workshop session, um, for the interview process, so that we can meet that six-month threshold for the, um...
Yes.
Pro-Tam time period. So I, I have been taking additional steps as we move forward, there are things that I can do, maybe, um, my, I'll have time constraints that prohibit me from doing something that I otherwise could have, you know, at that point, we can make a decision which is more important to get done, you know, as, um, issues come up with the city. Primarily what I've been focused on, um, are, you know, the things that you have to deal with every day that, um, haven't been addressed by one of our department heads, some kind of the crisis issues that rise to the top. I've been working on the recruitment, and, um, just most recently, Chief Lynn and I have started the police union negotiations.
So, I think one of the big, uh, things, and this will be done by the local government, whichever we choose, um, the, um, but they'll send out the recruiting packets, whenever they're, uh, they're asked of that, so that's something we don't have to do in-house.
Correct.
Um, and they'll do, uh, any further advertising beyond where we're at.
Correct.
Um, and so a lot of that, uh, stuff won't happen for maybe a month or two down the road before we have to do some more major vetting or, or preparing to vet.
Right, so we'll be ready to, um, move forward, um, as soon as tomorrow with, with, um, getting the advertisements placed in at least the two that we talked about, the League of Oregon Cities website and the ICMA website. Anything beyond that, um, you know, if the council wants us to bring it back to consider, I mean, you, we can, otherwise I can just say yes or no, I think that's a good use of the city's resources, I mean, I have that authority, uh, to spend the city's money with regard to that. I, I will tell you that the two that we talked about, the League of Oregon Cities, it's twenty dollars to advertise, most Oregon managers look to that resource when they're looking for a position in Oregon. The second is ICMA, and, um, because we have a ICMA member that resides in our community, our advertising cost, um, to advertise nationwide is four hundred and fifty dollars. So those are very reasonable, um, sources that we can utilize for, um, getting the word out. Now, when we go, um, with, you know, if we go with an outside firm, or we go with, um, Cascade West or LGPI, they also have additional resources and places where they will, um, place the advertisement. But the language has been drafted, they can use the same information, uh, we just need to finalize, um, the application packet, um, based on where you want to see the resumes directed.
So as far as time, time-wise, it won't be as much, uh, from this point on, probably for another month or two?
Correct, well, both, both of the, um, both of the bids that I received, um, the one that had the highest number of hours was seventy-one and a half hours for the entire process, uh, that's what their estimate was, the other one came in at sixty-eight hours, so that was their estimate. One estimated this preliminary portion to be thirteen hours to the point where we are now, um, and the other was, um, uh, slightly more than that, twenty, uh, twenty-one or twenty-two hours for the other entity. So, um, to this point, we've already accomplished a great deal of the work, having the workshop session with you to go through that application packet is, um, a great deal of time. The creation of that document in the first place, um, is, you know, it takes an enormous amount of time, so we've, we've already taken those steps, um, on your behalf, and you've made those choices as we've moved along, so, um, we've eliminated some of the costs so far, based on that.
Okay.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't want you to be, my personal opinion now, I, I don't want you to be under a lot of pressure to do things that you can't get done if we can't compensate you. And I'm, I'm wondering, and I don't know if the council would, uh, would agree to this, but is there some, some stuff that you could do away from the building that, that you would be, uh, that you would want to do, like, at, at your home, or some paperwork that you could do and keep track of your hours, rather than be interrupted like I, when I come in a buggy for half an hour every day? You know, uh, I mean, is that something that would, you would consider, or, or is that, is that a possibility, or...
I'm not a person that likes to work from home, because I feel like I'm actually more productive when I'm at the office, 'cause what happens is I start working on something, and I'm like, oh, I need to put in a load of clothes, oh, I need to do this or that. Um, so I actually do better, you know, working in the office, but with regard to that, um, some things I could do, like maybe draft letters to the applicants and do a, you know, things that don't take long periods of time that I can go in and out of, and I would certainly be willing to do something like that. I, I was telling Julie, I, you know, it was three, what, two or three o'clock today before I said, I'm really going out the door to get my lunch today, really. So there are a lot of interruptions and things that come up throughout the day, um, which would allow me some, but I wouldn't wanna work on a regular basis from home, just from my style.
I think from my point of view, I like having here, the face here is what we need.
Well, I agree with that.
Yeah.
But if she can't accomplish it.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
I'm, I'm not gonna let my duties slide, um, if it, you know, comes down to needing more time, or, um, you know, needing to get, delegate things so we can get the work done, I will have that conversation with you.
Okay.
Okay. So, um, we will, I need a motion in a second to move this down to...
Motion two.
I need to tell you the... It is...
Resolution number nine.
Yeah, nine dash for two thousand sixteen.
Do we have a motion to...
So I, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion to move this on to legislation, uh, utilizing option two as well as utilization of the Pro-Tam.
Second.
Okay, so that will move down to resolution number nine, be dealt with at that time. Request for council action standards, criteria, policies, directives to be used in the hiring of the city manager.
Okay, on page seventy-nine of your packet is a request for council action, um, and this, uh, is a recommendation that you move forward, uh, resolution number fourteen for two thousand sixteen, down to your legislative action item, to approve the position profile and adopt the standards, criteria, and policy directives for the city manager Pro-Tam, so that we can begin advertisement for the position. If you, uh, look further back in your packet, um, under your legislation section, on page one twenty-seven is the actual packet that has been prepared, that's our draft, so that's what you would be approving tonight, um, should you choose to move forward. And as we talked about, the, um, the hiring range would be up to eighty-five hundred dollars monthly with a closing date of August twelfth. That will give us roughly one month of an advertisement period to receive applications. Um, on one twenty-eight of your packet is a review of all of the, um, the charter provisions that, that are required of your city manager, and, uh, so those are incorporated into the position profile. Moving on to page one twenty-nine, um, there is one minor revision, we're gonna eliminate community service programs because it's redundant, we've indicated we have a community development department, um, but with the exception of that change, um, you know, we've, we've highlighted, um, the, uh, the, um, demographics of the, the, of the community and, and what's provided here. Under the next section, we've talked about the challenges and opportunities, we've talked about what is an ideal candidate to the council, um, we've listed the personal and professional traits we'd like to see, and then we highlighted the compensation package. And then you'll see on page one thirty-one, which is the last page, um, under the application and selection process, you'll see that blank line, dotted line there that goes across, and that's where we'll fill in, um, should you choose to, um, I guess it sounds like that's the, where you're headed, is that we'll go with, um, option two. So we'll fill in, um, either LGPI or the Council of Governments there, um, based on our, um, quotes that have been received, and, um, I will tell you, um, that I have received two quotes. One is from the local coun- council of governments, um, Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments, and they're located in Albany, um, and their rate is one hundred dollars per hour for their services. We also received, um, initially from LGPI, um, their rates of a hundred and forty dollars per hour. Um, I received an email this afternoon, um, that they have changed their rates, and they're, they now, um, charge one hundred and ten dollars per hour for their services. So my recommendation will be to move forward with, um, the Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments at the one hundred dollar rate, assuming that they're available to meet your timeline. If they're not, then I would move to the second low bid, which would be the LGPI. And just for your information, the schedule, and this is important to you, um, Counselor, and to you, Mayor, because you weren't present for our workshop and, or special se- session, I should say, on page one thirty-four is the draft recruitment schedule, and that's, um, what we've asked the, um, uh, the firms that I mentioned earlier, to confirm that they are able to meet those timelines. So, and we won't know that until tomorrow.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
On page one twenty-nine, I just have one little correction that needs to be changed out. Under, under employers, for where I work at, Taisquare, it's a foundry, not a firm, which it takes it to a whole different level, so it's a foundry.
Foundry? And you'll see that your resolution, um, says that it's approved in substantial form, so if we find a typo or anything else before we send it out at the last minute, we would be making that small minor change without bringing that back to you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved, the, the, the legislation.
Resolution number fourteen. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We'll move in second, and that, so that will move down to resolution number fourteen for two thousand sixteen. Uh, request for council action, library part-time position.
We have library director, Rose Pita, here this evening, to give a presentation to the council.
Good evening, with the passing of the local option ready and the passing of the two thousand sixteen, seventeen operational budget, the library was able to extend open hours. We're now open on Wednesdays from ten to six and Fridays, ten to five. With that, we also extended, um, hours for the current library assistants and raised, increased their hours from thirty hours per week to thirty-five, and what we are requesting tonight, or I'm requesting, is to, um, add an additional twenty-hour position. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the city staff to hire a library assistant to establish employment practices.
I'll second it.
It's been moved in second, if those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Who's opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Motion passes with five ayes and one nay and one absent. Uh, request for council action, filling of dispatch vacancy.
Chief Jeff Lynn will provide a report on this item.
Uh, before you for your consideration is a request to fill two current open vacancies within the police department, both vacancies are within our dispatch, uh, department. One is a full-time vacancy, and the other is a part-time position. Uh, the full-time, uh, position just vacated, uh, this previous month, the, uh, former employee is having difficult time with the, um, shift work associated with, with dispatch, and, uh, the part-time position was vacated earlier in the year when there was a separation from a, an employee that part-time dispatcher moved up into the full-time dispatch role. Both positions are currently authorized within the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen operating budget for the police department, so they are not new positions, they're, they're current positions that were in the budget last year as well as this year, and, uh, with your approval, we'll continue with the, uh, process associated with our hiring practices.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to authorize the city staff to hire a full-time and a part-time dispatcher to establish employment practices.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Who's opposed? Motion passes with six ayes and one absent. Or actually, I should be saying excused, because you... Request for council action, two thousand sixteen Oregon Jamboree.
Again, Che- Chief Lynn has a report for you this evening.
Uh, before you are, uh, two, a request for council action as well as an accompanying, a company resolution associated with the Oregon Jamboree. The twenty-fourth, uh, year of the jamboree is coming up at the end of this month, uh, the dates of the jamboree are actually scheduled for July twenty-ninth through July forty-first. As previous years, um, the jamboree needs assistance from the city, uh, to carry out the actual event, and, uh, listed within the, uh, request for council action are a list of those requests, both from the jamboree and also from myself in order to carry out some of the street closures, uh, and, um, uh, public address permits, applications, and liquor license applications and such. There are a series of four, fourteen requests on the, um, request for council action, I can either go over each of them or point out some significant ones, whatever's of the, the council's pleasure.
I think there might be some issue with one or two of them, so if you wanna go over...
Absolutely, uh, the recommendations, uh, you'll, you'll see on item number one under recommendations is to approve the closure of Seiki Park to the general public from six AM on Monday, seven twenty-five of two thousand sixteen to ten PM on Monday, uh, eight one of two sixteen. Basically, the closure of the park facilitates the erection of facilities within the park area, including fencing, sanitation facility... area, including fencing, sanitation facilities, vendor booths, and et cetera. The Oregon Jamboree has required to fence and/or adequately sign all potential access points to the park. With a park closed, authorized personnel only. This all requires a resolution, and also attached with that is the waiver of Sweet Home Municipal Code twelve point twelve point one hundred alcoholic beverages in Sankey Park. Two is the approve the partial closure of fourteenth and eighteenth Avenue and designation of temporary disabled parking areas on eighteenth Avenue. Eighteenth Avenue is adjacent, or Eighteenth Avenue adjacent to the jamboree grounds will be completely shut off to all vehicular traffic at approximately eleven a.m. on Thursday, July twenty-eighth, two thousand sixteen, at the direction of the chief of police or his designee. Eighteenth Avenue slash Eighth Street Road from Great Street to Mountain View will be designated no parking, also requires a resolution. Three, approve the waiver of peddler's license requirement for any Oregon Jamboree vendor within the Oregon Jamboree grounds. Four, approve the waiver of outside police manpower costs and public works equipment fees. Jamboree will be required to pay public works staffing fees if employees are required to respond after normal operating hours and/or be placed on call or standby. Jamboree will also be required to utilize public works supplied hydrant meters where applicable, and be liable for replacement costs should they become damaged or stolen. Five, approve the granting of public address permit for the main stage amplification beyond one thousand feet, not to exceed midnight on Friday, seven twenty-nine of two thousand sixteen, and Saturday, seven thirty of sixteen, and eleven thirty p.m. on Sunday, seven thirty-one of sixteen. Six, approve the granting of a public address permit for Sankey Park stage amplification beyond a thousand feet, not to exceed eleven thirty p.m. on seven twenty-nine of sixteen, seven thirty of sixteen, and seven thirty-one of two thousand sixteen. Seven, approve the granting of public address permit for live bands and radio station amplification beyond one thousand feet on Eighteenth Avenue, immediately adjacent to the jamboree grounds on Thursday night prior to the jamboree, amplification not to exceed eight p.m. on seven thirty of fifteen. Eight, grant permission to use the sites, to use onsite city property, including a portion of Sankey Park for beer gardens. Nine, approve waiver of the fifty-dollar per day event permit fee as required under Sweet Home Municipal Code five point oh four point zero one zero for the jamboree as a whole. Fee requirements must still be met for individual vendors who may be subject under this code. Ten, approve city staff assistance with overall jamboree goals and objectives, subject to budget constraints, federal, state, and local regulations. Eleven, grant permission to allow semi-truck and equipment storage on city-owned property at Public Works Environmental and Transportation Services facility on Twenty-Fourth Avenue. All liability for theft or damages to this equipment to be borne by the Oregon Jamboree. Oregon Jamboree to be responsible for supplying its own padlock, to be placed on identified gate access. Oregon Jamboree also to provide public works estimated number of vehicles and/or equipment within three days of event start to ensure proper parking can be identified for use on site. Twelve, grant permission to use city portions of the event center known as campground sites nine and ten. Thirteen, approval of liquor license for the event. There are four beer gardens inside the jamboree grounds, all located on city property, two of which are located within Sankey Park. Fourteen, suspend Sweet Home Municipal Code nine point two zero point zero three zero for consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages in public places during the time period of twelve p.m. on Thursday, seven twenty-eight of sixteen, until eleven fifty-nine p.m. on Sunday, seven thirty-one of sixteen.
Okay, so would you give us a report on ones that you feel?
Obviously, we'll start at fourteen since we're on the back page. You know, that, the whole request for council action went before the Public Safety Committee two weeks ago, and discussion was specifically associated with the municipal code for the consumption or possession of the alcoholic beverages within public places, and that's a new ordinance since the last, last year's jamboree. My concern at the time of the Public Safety Committee was that truly the police department does not have enough resources to actually investigate that or address those issues that are going to be occurring on the jamboree. As in the package, you know, there's, jamboree estimates ranges from eleven to fifteen thousand people, many of which camp. I think you can see there's roughly twenty-six hundred campsites throughout the community in twenty-three different locations. A lot of those people end up walking, and it is just a fact that there, a lot of them are going to be consuming alcohol in public places as they're going to it from the jamboree grounds. The concern was having the ordinance still in place and not enforcing the ordinance was as bad as, in my opinion, was more detrimental than just suspending that ordinance for the three and a half days.
The public safety, we did talk about that, and I think we discussed with Chief Lynn that it would probably be impossible to enforce that. Now, we also discussed that on a case-by-case basis, you're going to have to deal with it at some point, maybe, maybe not, but anyway, so I think, I mean, I don't know, it would be, I really believe it would be nearly impossible to enforce that unless it was somebody being completely control, out of control.
Left in place, it would be selectively enforced, and I don't necessarily like selectively enforcing something, but it could be a tool for certain situations.
So, who else was on the publics?
I concur with the council trust. Not possible.
So are you saying we should have selective?
I think it's not going to be possible.
Or should we suspend it? Well, that's what I'm asking.
Suspend it. Can we do that, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, it's in the ordinance, it's in the ordinance, right in the ordinance, it says that it can be suspended by the council, just like it, suspend some of these other things, it was written in the ordinance.
I mean, it's not ideal, in my opinion, but I mean, I don't know how the heck you're going to get it, I mean, that's, that's, all they're doing, and they got enough issues as it is, so I think it's probably the proper thing to do.
Would it be advantageous to leave it in place or suspend it?
Quite honestly, I don't like the idea of selective enforcement, you know, there's going to be a lot of people walking around, and I hate for a group to pass by and then an officer has to take enforcement action against another group right behind them with the same activities occurring.
So suspend it.
Chief, I do have a question that might be a consistency issue here. Noon p.m. on Thursday, seven twenty-eight sixteen until eleven fifty-nine p.m. on Sunday, seven thirty-one sixteen. I would assume that noon on Thursday, the justification behind that would be because if everybody's moving into town, setting up camp and whatnot, is that, is that correct?
Correct, arbitrarily chose the noon on Thursday.
Sure, we take a look, though, at midnight on Sunday, don't you think you're going to run into that a little bit on Monday, as well on the teardown?
Not necessarily as much on Monday.
Okay.
Hopefully, Monday, most of the individuals are left over from Sunday night, in my experience, or packing up to get out of town as soon as possible, that Monday morning, so we don't have near the issues.
I mean, we're drinking a lot of coffee.
I could use some right now.
So, excuse me, Jeff, may I ask you a question? What incidences have we had with, before we put the ordinance in place, with people drinking in public places?
We had no prohibitions against people drinking in public places, and it, well, after the event, there's thousands of people roaming the streets for a period of time, and alcohol goes along with it at different times from their campgrounds typically, and so the, we deal with an extremely large number of intoxicated individuals, some compliant, some not compliant, some coherent, some not coherent, and so we deal with the typical disturbances, the fights. Overwhelmingly, most people function fairly well, and we have very little problems with. Does that answer your question?
So if we did suspend it, that it would be just like it has been in the past, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
For that specific period of time?
For those, correct, the three and a half days. I have no problem with fourteen. And it's, depending on how it works this year, we may have to think of something next year, if that, that be the case, if it doesn't work out well. I'll also point out the public address permits are going a little later this year than in previous years, that's simply because of some of the acts are also playing slightly longer this year, both on, I know on Sunday for sure, and I'm not sure on the other Tuesdays, and Saturday for sure. And also, if you have questions, Robert Shamick, festival directors here for other questions, so that's the reason for the public address.
I think it was on the front end too, because of Safeway too.
Yes.
Activity happens at the front end of the jamboree.
Yes, and that's actually moving that, so it will not be in Safeway parking lot anymore, that'll actually be in the safety corridor on Eighteenth, which will actually improve our traffic flow on Main more, so it's definitely a good change. And then also, the biggest one to point out is the closure of Sankey Park from Monday prior to the jamboree to Monday after the jamboree for setup.
Yeah, there's some, there's some concern over that. Is there a reason that that has to be closed that long?
That has been, historically, that's taken the entire week to plan for that.
Well, I don't know that it's ever been closed a full week, though. Has it?
The last three that I presented to council, it has been, I did not invent that wheel.
The issue is we start putting all of our electrical in place, and so as soon as we start doing that, we have to fence the area out, you know, even if it's not live at that point, there's still a lot of electrical happening.
Okay, and last year, I believe there was concern over the fences around the building that was there, the residence.
Yeah, he addressed the issue because we had a beer garden right next to him, but it was, it turned out to be, you know, it's a craft beer garden, and there, you know, we had big jamborees, and it was, it wasn't a typical, you know, beer garden on the, like on the main side, but this year, right next to the residence, there will be kind of arts and crafts there, basically, so even though we're...
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes?
Chief Lynn, Mr. Shamick, there was concern last year with, I don't know, if, you know, the top of Sankey's going to be a campground again this year?
Yes.
So that goes back to the track that's up there. One of the concerns, previous years and last year, was that, you know, we don't want the kids downtown on their bikes riding around because we have high traffic and a lot of people in town, but we also have kind of isolated them away from where they want to go at the track thing, so is that still going to be locked out again this year for a week?
Yes, it will, yeah.
No, is that just because they're, because of the camping?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of big motor pushes up there, and, you know, it's, we take that property on, and so our camp hosts kind of police the area, and you've got bicyclists coming in and out, and it's just not a good situation. Granted, I'm a bicyclist, and they're not all bad, but, you know, you've got some, and we have it every year, you know, they come in and, you know, break things down, and it's not always the bicyclists, but if we, if we leave it open to the general public, anybody can come in, so.
Okay, so you're saying, I'm just playing devil's advocate, if the campers brought in their bikes, do they ride on the track?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, any other questions then? Mr. Riley? Tim Riley?
Tim Riley, City of Sweet Home, Channel Two North Side, good. We've been dealing with a lot of issues at Sankey Park, cleaning up, future improvements to the park, other than just allowing, which the jamboree is an obvious benefit to the community, I haven't said anything bad about that, since they are utilizing the park, and there's some issues there, what overall long-term benefit does the city gain other than just having the jamboree in town? I mean, is there any infrastructure that's improved, or any kind of facilities maintenance, or improving trails, tracks, what, I mean, you know, in physical means, they're getting a benefit for using the city's park, what benefits is the city gaining other than just having the jamboree in town? Are we renting it to them, or just letting them use it for free, or, I think you understand what I'm doing?
Yes, I do, actually. I do not. Can you?
I mean, other than, you know, the last time we took a survey, which is back in, I think, two thousand and three, that stated that we bring a little over three million dollars within a fifty-mile radius of the, you know, of the city's stadium, it's just an economic impact is what we bring. You know, we, we have a whole site crew that comes in and, you know, makes sure the Sankey Park's, you know, safe, we go in, and in years past, we rototill up all the, like the bark chips that are underneath the play structures because they're usually beat down, we, you know, have to tie up all the broken swings, and, but, I mean, as far as putting back into the park itself, I mean, I...
Maybe we can talk about that in the future, about having a workday down there or two before the jamboree starts to...
Or after, please.
Well, maybe before and after, but, yeah, maybe we can talk about that. Is that something you'd be interested in being at that meeting, Tim?
Yes, I would. I mean, I recognize the jamboree as an asset to the community, and being a physician myself, I appreciate what's going on, just as a community, when it first started out, it was for the benefit of the community, and this council has been very adamant that the park system in this community is something that really needs some improvement, and I think this might be an issue where we might be able to gain a little head start on some of that without costing taxpayers extra money.
I have to agree with Tim, or with Mr. Riley in that aspect, and I look at the bridge too, there's a lot of wear and tear on that bridge, and so that's, over time, I'm concerned about that bridge with the amount of traffic that's going over and back.
Why don't we plan, then, as soon as the jamboree is over this year, having a sit-down meeting with the jamboree folks and some of our staff from Public Works and a couple council members, and we will talk about maybe what we can do going forward. Does that sound good? Okay?
And by the way, that, you guys are doing a strong job with the Sankey Park.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
It looks, it looks really good this year.
I've seen him working hard over there, and along the streets, and, yeah.
It's going to be better.
All right. So, do we have a motion going forward?
Do we, motion each one, or just say one through fourteen?
You can, one through fourteen. We do the resolution, or to go down to resolution number fifteen with, with one through fourteen.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move one through fourteen requests to legislation.
I think it's actually two separate things, only a portion of the resolution deals with the street closures and the parking changes and the park.
Resolution number sixteen with one through sixteen.
Okay.
Is that right, Robert? Resolution number, yeah, number fifteen with one through fourteen as attached. Do we have a second? Is that okay, Robert?
Yes, I'll second.
Okay, motions moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Excuse me, excuse me, do I have to recuse myself since I sit on the Sheddick Board, Mr. Snyder?
That might be a conflict of interest, yeah.
Okay, so I recuse myself from the...
Okay, so, just, you can do it one, one of two ways. Either you can recuse yourself ahead of time or you can make a, a vote, a non-vote or a, um... Your vote would not be a yea or a nay, and you would say at that time how you do that, so, either way, you've already recused yourself.
Before we move forward, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Humphreys had raised her hand, she had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We've bypassed her, so would you like to...
To the motion?
It didn't have, it didn't have to do with the consumption of alcohol, which is on one of the items that they were presenting.
Which one?
They had to do with the street closure, which I think is true. Are the residents of the street exempt from no parking or does that include everybody?
The residents of the street will be provided parking.
Correct, but they will not be able to park on the street unless they're a disabled vehicle and have a disabled placard on them.
Are, are they notified that this is gonna be happening?
Actually, those on Eighteenth Avenue and Ames Creek Road, they're actually the ones that requested the no parking in that asset, in that portion of the, the road. The ones on Eighteenth Avenue from Long Street to the festival grounds are notified and I'll let Mr. Shamick speak to what's... They're each, each resident is given four, four parking passes to get in and out of the, the whole street.
Because, you know, it's been going on for twenty-four years, people move in, people move out.
Absolutely.
And, and we've made sure that they had the passes before, they're provided parking. So, motions on the floor, it's been moved and seconded with one recusal. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes with one, with five ayes, one excused and one abstention. Those, okay. It's getting worse and worse. League of Oregon City's legislative priorities for two thousand seventeen.
Yes, and the saga continues. On page eighty-five of your packet is request for council action with regard to setting the legislative priorities for the city of Sweet Home that we would in fact intern forward on to the League of Oregon Cities. Given our discussion earlier this evening and the vote, rather than having you make your selections and turn them into our office as maybe has been done in the past, or we will be asking you to voice your selections tonight during our discussion. So we can forward the top four priorities to the League of Oregon Cities prior to their deadline of July twenty-second. I apologize that this was not placed on an earlier agenda for discussion. Moving forward into the future, when you get this next year, I would actually suggest that you help hold a workshop session to actually go through the items in greater detail so that each of the counselors can have a discussion with the others about their position in making their choice selections. So, Ma- Mayor, I'm not sure how you would like me to proceed, I'm happy to review each of the items.
I think, I think if anybody has any questions about any of the items they need to ask. There's, of course, a few that are pretty self-explanatory, but...
I thought you were supposed to just ask these and then turn them over.
Yeah, I think that's what we would do, but if there's any questions about any of them, if anybody doesn't know what they are.
What we would like you to do is put your, your name on them so we can keep them full of the record. So we have a record of who voted for what priority.
On the yellow sheet?
Yes. Turn in page eighty-eight from your packet. Do is distribute it across the there, the blue sheet.
Those are the ones that they've already turned in.
Okay.
They're just adding them.
Okay.
How do you spell underwood again?
So if you'll write your name on page eighty-eight, on that, and then make your four top selections. And then we'd be asking for a motion from the council to have staff complete the paperwork and forward that on to the League of Oregon Cities based on your four top priorities. If there were a tie for one of them, Julie and I had a discussion about how we would approach that. We would not address the tie, the tie, we would just like to say it was the, you know, we got three votes for the top three and then the rest were, had one vote, we wouldn't submit a fourth priority based on that.
Okay. So, um...
Does he still need a motion?
I don't know, oh, do we need to have a motion adopting the priorities or...
Yes, just directing the staff to, to tally the votes and move your top items of priority to the League of Oregon Cities.
Would entertain that motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion directly to the city manager for protest to submit the top four priorities of the city of Sweet Home for the two thousand seventeen legislative session. As identified by consensus, I communicate those priorities to the League of Oregon Cities.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes with six ayes and one excused. We actually do, um, the council appointment goes down to resolution number sixteen, and we actually do need to adopt resolution number sixteen.
Okay, and I do, do have just one amendment that would be encompassed on your handout on the yellow sheet. We've made a correction with, to clarify that the term expires December thirty-first rather than December two thousand and sixteen.
Okay.
And that's the only change from the one in your packet.
Okay. So, down to legislation, resolution number nine for two thousand and sixteen. Can you read my title, please?
Yes, I can get there. Resolution number nine for two thousand and sixteen, resolution selecting the recruitment strategy for the city manager position.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve, uh, resolution number nine for two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, these have already been moved and seconded, so those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes with six ayes and one, excuse, resolution number fourteen for two thousand and sixteen.
May I just make a clarification on that last vote for resolution number nine, implementing strategy number two in combination with option one, what's possible?
With option, yes.
Okay.
We're supposed to pass this on?
Yes. Okay, resolution number fourteen for two thousand and sixteen.
Sorry, I've gotta find it here. Page one twenty-six, I'm in our five tonight. I'm not finding it.
Uh, page one twenty-six.
Not on my one twenty-six.
Resolution adopting the standards.
Resolution number fourteen for two thousand and sixteen, resolution adopting the standards, criteria and policy directives to be used in hiring a city manager.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes with six ayes and one excused. Number fifteen for two thousand and sixteen.
Resolution number fifteen for two thousand and sixteen, a resolution concerning the Oregon Jamboree park closures, street closures and restrictions as amended with the attachments of items one through fourteen as described in the request of council action.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nope.
Those opposed, or those abstentions?
I abstained.
Motion passes with five ayes and one abstention. And one excused. Getting tired, yes. Number sixteen for two thousand and sixteen.
We are reading off the revised version, resolution number sixteen for two thousand and sixteen, resolution appointing Diane Gerson to the Sweet Home City Council for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes with six, five ayes.
Did you abstain on this one?
Yeah, I abstained.
Five ayes, one abstention and one excuse.
I'll do better next time.
Admin and finance, we do have some things that are coming up here soon, we'll be having a meeting. Yeah, that's what I said, we're having a meeting. Parks Board?
We have a meeting on the eighteenth at eight-thirty, I think that's a Monday, is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we have a new, um, direction. Uh, property?
We need to have a meeting, Mr. Mayor, soon.
All right. To discuss...
Property.
Property?
Yeah, this stuff on Ninth Avenue.
Yes.
And it wasn't, there was no, but that's...
Robert, can we set up a time for a property committee meeting to...
Or did we already do, I'm sorry, did we already do that?
Ninth Avenue?
Yeah, we only have another thing coming up tomorrow, tomorrow, yeah. Can, can we extend that to the day of night or we have to just...
We have to have a, we have to have the notice out at least twenty-four hours.
Okay, all right, we'll just do it later, it'll be good.
Okay. Uh, public safety?
Uh, yeah, we had the meeting that Chief Lynn was talking about. We also talked about getting together with a school on this transgender bathroom thing and, and I don't know that that's, I don't know who... I don't know who's gonna take care of that, oh, were you gonna do that, Chief Lynn? Make the connection so we could talk to the, the new superintendent and maybe, I don't know, maybe after school starts, did we even decide on that? I don't know.
Uh, I was told he, he is here local and so I gave him like this last week to get settled in, and so I will try to reach out to him next week and set up a time.
Because they're gonna get razor crazy here pretty quick too, so. I think that was all, we talked about the other stuff too, so, we were good.
Okay, uh, Public Works?
Hey Mike, is the nineteenth is the water rates meeting and it's like six, six thirty. I don't have my sheet in front of me, it's six, I believe.
I have six.
Six, yeah. Oh, not, nothing else, right?
Okay.
July nineteenth?
Traffic safety?
We have a meeting coming up, I don't have my phone on, so...
Next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday, yes, okay.
Youth advisory? Anything?
Ninth Avenue.
Chamber?
The Treaty of Patriss, Daniel Chamber, Congress and visitors center, fifteen seventy-five Bean Street. The Thursday celebration at Hobart Park, the Rotary's seventy-fifth anniversary dedication has been canceled and will be held sometime in August. They, they just can't, um, the, the director guy can't get here. Thursday, the twenty-first, in Sankey Park, from five to eight is the Police Department Safety Fair. The twenty-third, the Rotary and Kiwanis Club is requesting anybody that can help. We'd like to do really good cleanup of Highway twenty before the jamboree starts at nine a.m. Meet at Clover Park. Going on right now out at Foster Lake is the Open Water Tournament, if you want to take any of those events in.
Water polo.
Water polo, open water tournament, um, yeah. The twenty-fifth is the Wait the World, Monday, the twenty-fifth is the Wait the World event at Foster Lake, which provides some boating activities for underprivileged foster care children. They are looking for help, donations, money, food, check the website, Wait the World, and then you go two pages under the Foster Lake event.
Wrestling camp, is that still going on through today, I think?
I apologize, I don't...
Yeah, it was. Okay. Uh, Fire District?
Well, Saturday, we had a wet fireworks show.
It was good.
Wasn't, was the most pleasant evening as far as weather, but it didn't go off without very many hitches, not with a bang, yeah.
I thought that it sounded good.
Okay.
A good show, appreciate you guys doing that.
It was, it was a good show, I thought. Um, just for a little additional note, just for the public to know that we actually did not cover that fireworks up to that point financially. And we had a private donation that came in that helped boost us a couple hundred dollars over that amount. So keep in mind that this is gonna get to a point where we may not be able to fund it in the future because it was pretty expensive, it was like six thousand, Dave, I don't, I don't recall. About around six thousand dollars for that show. So, it keeps going up and I was getting the funding for that, it's getting tougher and tougher and tougher.
Council of Governments, did you go over to anything?
Uh, no, the meeting is actually, for the managers' meeting is actually gonna be this Friday.
This Fri- I thought it was last Friday, but, okay.
I'm not able to attend this, this month, but I hope to be there next month.
Okay. Uh, Area Commission on Transportation, that is a vacant position, we're gonna have to redo some of our committees. And the rest of these going down are ad hoc, Community Healthcare, I'll talk about it in a second. Solid Waste is vacant and the Ad Hoc Committee on Healthcare, we're going forward with our healthcare committee. A lot of interesting things going on and we have one of, well, we have a couple of our committee members here right now. Would, would, do you want to give a report on what's going on?
It's gonna be big.
That's okay.
Well, the committee's held, is, my name's Bill Matthews, I live at nine twenty-two Pine Cup. The Community Health Fair, um, Fair will be held at the high school on August twentieth. And the committee is forming a broad-based community event that is gonna be sponsored by Samaritan Health and the city of Sweet Home and numerous other entities that are involved in community health, all the way from putting your fingers to help. I was here earlier. And all of Samaritan's mobile facilities that could be here will be here. And we've got a number of people, I would say, in the twenties to thirty different vendors. We're doing this in conjunction with a, a farmer's market. And hopefully, we're gonna involve some other community people into this as well. The hours are gonna be from ten to two. We're going to be, we'll have the high school available to us from six to six. So there's gonna be a lot of setup, a lot of take-down. But most of all, the whole, whole focus of this is community information. We want to get as much information out of the community as possible from a broad base of, of things that involve community health. And nobody's selling anything except to farmers. But what we are trying to promote is information and resources that the community might have to orient themselves to. So we've got a lot of work to do in a short period of time, but we're getting a lot of support from council and also from Bob Dalton, who's really taken this under his wing, and a number of other, um, strong players. So we're enthusiastic about it, it should be a big deal. And this is gonna be a win-win for everyone. Thank you. Anything, questions that I can answer?
So, one of the things that excites me about this is that I've seen this committee and a lot of committees are not very excited when they get, get there. They're kind of just blah, but this committee seems to be really excited and, and we have a lot of community investment, I think, at this point.
We do. The council tried to, we were at the meeting this morning from the board, did you say that we're enthusiastic?
Eh.
Eh, I know.
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to, everybody we talked to is enthusiastic about it too. We don't have any naysayers at this point. We've got a lot of positive reinforcements and, and a lot of, what can I do to help? How can I contribute? And so, this is a field goal thing, really is.
And from my standpoint, I, I, I think we're hoping that it, that it grows. And this is kind of a.
We hope this is the first annual.
That's right, we addressed it and it's kind of an iffy thing, we don't know what it's gonna be, where, I think the number that they threw out was five hundred and that would be incredible for a first year. So, I think it's a really, really good thing.
Thank you, and again, we're trying to, if anyone has any information, needs any information, has comments or anything, we would ask that you funnel things to Bob Dalton. Most of you know him, if not, we can get that to him through the chamber if you wanna do that, but we're trying to keep it controlled and focused and Bob's our department now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
So, I know Katrina and you and Lisa and Greg and myself and, and Dave are all on that committee, so if you have any questions, come and ask, and we're gonna be asking people to maybe do some things, so be prepared. And we're doing a walk beforehand. I talked with some folks tonight about helping out on that, so maybe doing some of the trails that, the trails that people don't get to see all the time. Alright, so moving ahead, we have several committees here that are under Mayor's Report that are close to the same, and I would like to explore whether we want to change our ordinance to combine maybe Parks Board and Tree Commission into one committee and then having subcommittees that would work on each one.
If needed.
If needed? If needed. And.
We talked about public safety.
Public Safety and Traffic Safety, maybe combining and being one committee. So, we'd have public input on public safety issues also, so.
I might also suggest that you could combine your administrative and finance with property committees, cause that's an administrative function.
We could do that and we could also look at our Area Commission on Transportation and Council of Governments as being one position. So, I think, I think we should look at this as options and let everybody kind of soak that in. And at the next council meeting, we'll have some options that we can, we can look at our ordinance and maybe change that, okay?
So, just a discussion item on the next agenda?
Yes. I don't think it has to be done immediately, but I wanna make sure that we start discussing it and see where, where, where we should go with that, cause I think it's, it's time.
What the livability ordinance is, hey, we're going back on the agenda.
What's that?
The livability ordinance. Where we, where we had that one was, is you guys were on the committee, we're going to circle whatever parts you wanted out of there and we probably figured bringing back that back to the committee and.
Yeah, I think.
We need to readdress that.
I think it needs to.
Yeah, we, we're under, underneath the rug. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I can try to say it wouldn't break, come up and go.
Yeah, it was, it was in committee and they were supposed to bring recommendations back to them. So, we'll go ahead and look at that then, who the chair of that committee is.
Is that a separate committee?
No, that's Public Safety.
Public Safety.
Okay.
So, if any of your counselors don't have the information, there's three different cities that have livability plans. If you don't have those, I, I've read through three of them and there, there's stuff I like and stuff that I don't think really applies to us, but, so if you have any interest in doing that, you know, if you can get, I don't know who, who'll give it to you, but if you ask for that, maybe.
Julie.
Or, yeah, I, I know you had some of those, I don't know who got them anyway, but, anyway, so if you wanted to, if you wanted have input on that, then I think you probably should re, review that and.
Yeah, the idea was mark, mark in red which ones you liked and, and we would sort of connect those and bring them back.
Moving forward, City Managers' Report. Oh, actually, we had a parade this weekend, so, and we had the jamboree and.
No, Sportsman's Holiday.
Sportsman's Holiday and.
Chainsaw Art Carving.
What's that?
Chainsaw Art Carving, packing breakfasts.
Yep, all that went on. And we queen, crowned a queen. And under City Managers' Report.
So, with regard to the Sportsman's Holiday, there were a few issues that rose to my attention during that event and I'd like to just publicly thank Katrina with the chamber for her willingness to work through some issues that were brought forward. She turned, she was a very good partner to the city and other organizations that have events planned in this community, namely the jamboree, and we would like to thank her publicly for her cooperation in working through that. Also, in that vein, I received a call from Commissioner Will Tucker and we had to work through an issue that we were able to resolve with, in partnership with our Public Works Director, Mike Adams. And so, I'd like to thank Mike for that. During the course of our conversation, Commissioner Tucker indicated that he's willing to extend his help to our community in any way that he can, and I told him that I would relay that information to the council, so if there are issues that you want to address with our county commissioner, he has extended that offer to you. So, I wanted to let you know that. One of the things that I worked on this week, as I had a meeting with the South Sandy Am All Lands Collaborative, I met with Sharon, I'm gonna mess up her name, Canary, and Eric Anderson this week, and they shared the details about what their collaborative offers to our community. They are, they've now finalized their, the, the, their, their organization and they are looking for board member representation. They indicated that the city contributes and you'll see on the back sheet who the partners are for this organization. The City of Sweet Home is one of those partners and they are looking for a representative from the council to serve on their board. And so, I let them know that I would bring that information to you for consideration. They indicated that they are also holding a spot for a city employee. They've asked that the city manager be appointed to that position. In light of the fact that I'm a pro tem manager, I'll be visiting with staff to talk about time and who has time to attend the meetings. And we may propose that we have a staff member attend, or if a counselor makes it known that they want, would like to serve on that board in the capacity, then maybe we just have the counselor attending those meetings on behalf of the city during the interim time period. They do meet during the day. I will get the details to you. I'm not finding it, there are too many sheets of paper tonight. Oh, here it is. They meet the third Monday of every month, from two to four, at the Jim Riggs Community Center. And their focus is forest collaboration, the trail around Foster Lake and livability issues. That's their primary focus in this next few years. And so, they asked me to share that with you.
So, next Monday would be the third Monday.
Okay.
At what time?
From two to four at the Jim Riggs Community Center.
I'll try and make that just to, so we have some representation.
I'll be glad to volunteer for that.
Okay.
I'm gonna have to start getting used to your name.
Okay.
And then finally, let's see, we visited with you previously, moving forward, the Admin and Finance Committee is gonna have a discussion about whether you want to implement council rules. I think that we distributed a few samples to you. If you want further input, please get those to Julie, so when it comes up on our agenda in August, we can make sure to incorporate those into our discussion.
Alright.
That's all I have to say.
Finance Director.
Evening meeting, need to call, I'm lucky when you have a meeting. Request from the counselors, he wants us to take another look at our investments and where we're investing our funds. And I spoke to, as I mentioned earlier, Sean Gergen, he's the Investment Counselor for Uncoa Bank, who our funds are held at, Uncoa Bank is our banker here in town. He said he'd be happy to come down and visit with the Admin and Finance Committee, which is you, Greg Muller and Ryan Underwood, to talk to you about your, I sent him a copy of our financial policy and he's comparing it to what's available to invest. And I do, did get a notice from Ted Wheeler, Oregon State Treasurer, that apparently they've been getting complaints because the interest rate has been low there and they developed an Oregon Local Government Intermediate Fund that he's looking at too, that might be an option for us to put funds in. That's still, it's not protected like the pool and it still is an investment with the opportunity to, to either gain or to lose, but it's something more to look at. He's just asked for a day that you would like him to come down, give him a choice of several days, not a Tuesday, he said, cause he's over at Coast on Tuesday with his, over there, but that there's a day, maybe give him two or three days, that you would be available, that he could come down.
So, Admin and Finance is myself and Ryan and Greg. So, probably six o'clock-ish.
Locker in the day, okay, six o'clock?
Unless, and while you have Mondays off and maybe a noon meeting or something, Greg, could you do that?
I could do a noon meeting.
Huh?
I could do a noon meeting.
Okay.
Okay, noon meeting, I'll buy you lunch.
You, yeah, we could probably do that. So, yeah, a noon meeting at, on, maybe next Monday?
I think that, well, that might be, I'm off the next two days and getting ahold of him, so.
Well, let's see if it, see if it'll work. I'll, I'll probably be gone on the twentieth.
Okay, so see if you can, you can come down on Monday.
I'll be out of town the nineteenth, twentieth and twenty-first.
So, yeah.
So, Monday it is.
Monday it is.
Okay.
If we can do it.
I will see that in a lap and we'll look at maybe the following Monday.
Okay. Alright, Library Services.
We're continuing with the summer leaving program and we've got a couple of more programs scheduled before we wrap it up and it's going very, very quickly. And we appreciate all the community support.
No Planning Services Manager, Police Chief, what?
Wait a sec, she wasn't done.
Okay.
We've installed a new book drop. We, we use the dividends from the safe.
Workers' Comp, Safe Corporation gives us dividends every year and we use that for our wellness program, safety program, and we utilized it this year to purchase a new book drop, because the bad, the other one was so bad, I'm bending over and trying to get the books out, stuff and it had the Timoldile from Safe Corporation come down and do an ergonomics on it and recommended a book drop and we came down and did some more tweaking that they'll have to do. It looks very nice out there, it's husky green.
Husky green.
Not, not that other school. And the other, the other issue with the other book drop is the block actually broke on it and wasn't able to be repaired, so.
Alright. Police Chief.
It wasn't, it was there when the building was built, yeah.
Police Chief.
Since last week's tragedy in Dallas where the five officers were killed, we've received, our departments received a lot of input from the community, a lot of support from the community. As far as flowers, we have a lot of arrangements in our dispatch that have been sent to us, and plants and donuts, so all of it was very much appreciated. And it's, it's nice to know the, the support's out there from our community. We also, today, the City Manager of Pro Tem swore in our newest police officer, which is Keenan Martin. He's a local individual and so, we're excited to have him onboard. The next item we will see throughout the summer, we'll be using the bikes again on bike patrol at various days when we have the staffing and, to do it. And so, some earlier had commented, had seen the bike up on the, the trails in and around Sankey. And last but not least, last Friday, speaking of the, we mentioned earlier in the, a few months ago, the height of the Drug Team Task Force that's forming with all of Lynn County, I sat in on the supervisor selection process for that and the Albany Police Department is offering up a lieutenant to actually supervise that team when it, when it gets up and running and that lieutenant will be Jerry Drum, who I know is a fantastic choice for that. So, the plan is still, next year, about a year away, to look at fully, fully functional drug task force.
And before we move off the item, I would ask that we take a moment of silence for the police officers that died in Dallas.
I can move that for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Chief Flynn, so if we're gonna be having all these bicycles running around, can we cut your fuel budget or not?
Absolutely.
I'm just, I'm, I.
We're very conservative on fuel consumption.
Public Works.
Um, I believe you all received an email today. It has more information. The Wayfarer Treatment Plant experienced an overflow early Monday morning. The pumps in the F, the wet well, which is essentially the gathering spot where all the sanitary waste ends up at the treatment plant from all the collection system, did not kick on properly sometime around three AM on Monday, July eleventh. Therefore, we, we had an overflow and, well, some, some raw sewage into Ames Creek. It's estimated on the high end of about a hundred and sixty-three thousand gallons over a five, five-hour period. But staff, when they were made aware of it, they did all the necessary notification protocol cleanup and everything and everything has checked out. We've done the, the tests in the river and in the creeks and we've been able to remove the signs and we're back going full bore. We don't know exactly what happened just yet as to why it didn't work right. The electrician's supposed to be in tomorrow afternoon to do some more troubleshooting and stuff, but essentially, it was just operating. There was some flow that was still going through the plant like it was supposed to, but they just, they just don't know right now why the, the sensors didn't notify anybody or the pumps kick on or anything, so. We've put some temporary things in place to manually check those on a, on a regular ongoing basis, twenty-four hours a day until we can get it isolated and figured out and we'll, we'll go from there, but just thought of, let you, let you know.
City Attorney.
Just, we have a special meeting tomorrow at six o'clock. An offer came in on that property that was partially donated to us and we just have to discuss it and see what you guys think. We weren't expecting it and that's why it's a special meeting, just came in. But there are, everybody involved in it on the other side doing these, on the timeline, very short timeline.
Okay, we'll adjourn at ten twenty-one.